Let's get started. I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you, Megan, for all of your staff being part of this. We're grateful. The purpose of today is to spend the next hour talking about an outside agency funding request, and then if there's time, we can talk about the capital group plan. A lot of work has gone into this, and there was official requests that were made to either myself or Megan primarily, the ones who got those requests. A lot of the people, as you can see, are folks that the city has funded over the years. There are some new organizations in here. You know, just remember that this is not a meeting where we deliberate and make decisions. Certainly, if you feel favorable towards something, there are ways that you can say that without being too demonstrative. We've got to be thinking hard about this if we want to change what we see on this spreadsheet. And really, it's by Monday because the city has some advertising deadlines, and Megan can go in there in a minute. We'll have a work session next Thursday, and the meeting on July 5th will be coming up Tuesday. So we do have, the clock is ticking on us to really think hard about this and think about what we feel strongly about. Again, Megan, just continue to be thankful for the staff and all the work that went into this. So anyway, the idea today was primarily to talk about this, maybe talk about, and add some CIP stuff in there, but to spend about an hour, so let's not waste any more time.
Okay, so for context, in a minute, I'm going to have Erica Sprouse present some nuances about agency funding to you. But I put the policy, and I told you it's from 2003, in front of you, just so you know kind of what we're working off of. Also, up on the screen and next to you, which Erica is going to be talking from a good bit, is just kind of where we are today, what people ask for. And Erica, I'm not trying to steal her thunder, we'll hit some highlights. But a lot of agencies did not ask for an increase in funding because they received a lot of CARES Act money or other things. But, you know, so you could say, well, the food bank, you know, why are they not asking? Or if there's a change, well, there's been some change with debt with their building and other stuff. There's nuances, and we can go through that. You have with you basically what they submitted, and we summarized the things correctly, Erica in her packet. And then this is just to give you what it is. Now, what we don't do is we don't go out on the web and do an all-call, come one, come all, and would you like us to fund you? That does not happen. These are agencies, and the overreaching thing with the policy is that it's typically funding services that we would have to provide otherwise. One agency is not listed on here because it's a contractual relationship. There may be a few others, but finance knows that Lee County Humane Society is a contractual relationship. If they don't request funding, we have a contractor providing those services for us. And that's based on, and I think Helsman Grinwald, they didn't even ask Katrina Cook about it. I mean, it's based on the number of animals that come from Auburn that are the intake. So that's the specific formula in which we fund them, what is costing them. But Erica is going to talk to you a little bit about this whole outside agency funding, give you more perspective, because I think it's kind of a mystery to some of you, too, about, you know, what's going on and why. And I will speak from my lens. The budget message says it's level funding, because it's not my role to choose for you. You're the governing body. If you're going to fund, I'm recommending level funding at this stage because I don't have feedback otherwise, and that's not the decision for me. That's a policy decision for the council, for the council only. Staff can speak to what these organizations do or don't do that we know of and so on. And so down at the bottom, you'll see, like, I am my brother's keeper and AO Discover is new agencies. Those are ones that we level funded, everybody during COVID, and we did not accept new agency requests during COVID, because we weren't sure about much of anything. So these are ones that have been in the hopper for some time, wanting to submit. So when one of you says so-and-so agency would like funding from the city, we do take their name and contact information, and when we send out outside agency requests, they get those requests at that time. But we don't send them out until several months before we do the budget. It's, you know, because we need people's financials, we need all kinds of things, and they've got to justify why they're asking. So Erica, I probably said everything you were going to say, but not stood. Erica is, you know, ready to go. She loves presenting.
Love it. Good afternoon.
She's going to do an excellent job.
Yes. So as Megan mentioned, you all have the official funding policy for outside agency. Real quickly, outside agencies or agencies that provide a service that the city would normally be expected or required to provide, as well as agencies referring to the goals of the city, of any city function, or provide a certain structure. So those are kind of three main bullet points within the policy. Like Megan mentioned, in the budget document, it's level funded, and what I'll go over today is the actual requested amounts for '23 and '24, any variances, I'll kind of address those pretty quick for you. So the first one is East Alabama Medical Health, and they have requested an additional $6,000 per year, and that's to cover the cost of un-reimbursed care to citizens in Auburn that they're providing. Lee County EMA, you see a decrease there, so in '22, we actually provided an additional $50,000 in funding to EMA, and that was for their communications and operations room that was being built at that time. So they've actually received for operations $31,903 since 2011. That's been a level of funding. And they're actually requesting $50,000 for '23. Lee County Health, and that is, I'm sorry, and they go to, that's to assist tools with equipment.
And then I'll give you perspective why it is not worth the way that we'd like to see it work, and Paul can talk about this a little bit. When we call it geofitso, text messages, is when I was talking to Bob Parsons, and somebody was on the loose in Town Creek Park, and we're trying to only message a portion of town. They, that is a service that they provide to us. No, it doesn't work perfectly, but it's still trying to get at it. There's a lot of things that they do on the side that help us, and Will Matthews kind of leads our efforts with them. Paul, is there anything else major that you think we should touch on that they are doing as a service? It's, I mean, general emergency response.
Of course. Just, you know, weather situations, we may open up the emergency operations center, and we send staff over there, and they work with us to regulate on that. So, but as Megan said, that was a, that's one of the things we're really working towards, is having that geofitso work better. But we work a lot with the, you know.
Next on the list is Lee County Health Department, and they're requesting just over $2,000 more each year, and that is to provide a level, to continue to provide a level of public health services for needed.
Erica, so that's Lee County Health, '27, so that's three years that we've provided. Forty-seven, nine hundred and forty.
Prior to that, it's been leveled. I don't know the exact time period.
All right. I presume the city line to mention those funds, those county mission.
I do not know the exact, I just, I don't have four years.
That has to leave, that applies to Lee County.
And I would like to, just while we're talking to the county board and asking that question, one of the things I'd love for us, when we get to gather information for the next annual budget or anybody else, is I'd like to know who they received funds from, other municipalities, and what amount. I think it's important for when we're making these decisions, because if we're preparing a grant of someone's request, then, I mean, it's, we're too late now. But I would say for the next annual, and whatever council that may be, it'd be great information to know, like, maybe just a simple question of, hey, what did, you know, what funding did you receive from the county, if, like, you know, the Smiths, you know? I mean, I don't know what station provides to some of these.
Yeah, and on the flip side of that, if we're coming up short.
Right.
Well, and one of the things that'll help you discern is, most of these folks do a pretty good job of sicknesses for their Auburn-specific cut, and you would think by population that we always pay more. That is not necessarily the case for what the county does. It kind of varies, and we're happy to look into that nuance. We also have some confusing things based on how our budget cycles run versus others. Mayor Fuller was reaching out this week with some things, so we'll be happy to address that for you.
Good question.
Are these, are those agencies in that top tier, are they, do they pay, like, occupational tax to the municipality? Is that it?
East Alabama, no. Not unless they have a physical presence in Auburn.
All of those are.
So they do.
Yeah, only in the jurisdiction that they.
Yeah, even the state employees are not exempt from it, because we get that from Auburn University, I'm saying, so. East Alabama Health, we do, but they're not.
Next is the Alton Cooperative Extension Service. They requested an additional $10,000 per year, but they did not specify the year they're starting.
He was just programmatic, wasn't he?
Yeah. All University Runway Extension, so this is from existing agreement between City of Auburn, Lee County, and City of Opaika, where each entity pays one third of 5% of matching funds for FAA grants. And this increase is based on the amount of grant funding anticipated by the university for fiscal '23 and '24, which is just over $16 million.
Can we go back, please? With the Lee County Youth Development Center. Okay, so in 2020 and '21, is that the amount that the city, in '22 and '21, in '22? So they're requesting that amount again?
It's level funding. Maybe they request more.
So they, they'll get it regardless.
Remember that we also have one mill of property taxes that goes to them. And Opaika abates that property tax, and Auburn does not. We fund them heavily out of property tax, and we have longstanding policy to not abate property taxes that go, it's called Children's Home, but it goes to Lee County Youth Development. And so when we do property tax abatements for industry, that's a no-no in Auburn. We will not abate those taxes for them, nor East Alabama Health, because we believe we should contribute, and everybody should pay their pro rata to those services. So I just want you to know that they get extra out of Auburn, because we have robust property in Auburn that's worth much, but also we don't believe in abating it, and that helps them a good bit. And Laura Cooper speaks about it frequently, about how grateful she is.
I'd like to back up on also the co-op. This is supposed to be the services that we would normally provide, right? I don't really face the rules. I just have a hard time figuring out what it is with the co-op that the city would have been responsible for doing, and they not, and this organization. Really cool order, their, their name. I would say they're spaying.
Megan, could I add something? This, you're not doing a profit extension service? They provide, they provide resources to us, for instance, you know, wildlife person comes out and does surveys, when people are complaining about snakes, thinking that we have hazardous snakes and determines if whether they're poisonous or not poisonous snakes. They also work with us, with the Master Gardeners, the Demonstration Garden, the Outed Kiesel Park, and they do some other work as far as, like, spraying, recommendations for spraying and other things like that.
And they also, they're like on a forage program.
Yeah.
Because that's just in all these stores, but like for our homeschool and private schools.
And our schools do that for us.
And they also do programs for us, for our seniors, and for our children's programs. They'll come in and do programs for us.
They did put in their packet, at least.
I was, what clears, is what, how that matched up with what.
No, and they also put in that they are funded by all three major entities. Sometimes they don't put Smiths in, even though Smiths has been a city for quite 15 years now, like, they don't put it in, but a lot of times they do, as well as.
Joel Collins received a fine art. They are requesting an additional $25,000 per year, and that is to expand its offerings to the community, including a new museum and motion initiative.
And that's for them to come to the consumer, as opposed to, like, they would go to assisted living facilities, senior programming, schools, rural communities.
They could go to neighborhoods, they could go to community centers.
Erica, on there, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
I was just going to say they give a really good description in the packet.
They do.
They do outreach, and, and Ms. Whitten, the gentleman that was representing the university on the Arts Committee, was from Joel Collins.
In fact, yes.
About 50, I mean, that's, that went up, and was that '22? So.
No.
No, it's actually always been 50.
It's always been 50.
But they actually, they have to submit proof of what they have done. So in those two years, what they submitted was 42.
Okay.
And 40.
But it's been.
And they worked.
Yeah, it has been.
But it takes 20 years now?
Oh, it's been a while. I've been looking back. It's been at least 17, yeah.
Well, it's, it's been since the museum opened. But they've always had to report out, and that's the other thing. I mean, they do, a lot of these agencies have to draw this down with proof of programming and other things. It's not, we don't just struggle with a monthly check or give them 50 grand or something a year, you know?
Right. They in particular have to request it and make you review it to see what they have done, and that may or may not give you a 75 if you were to report it.
So with the East Alabama Medical Center Surgical Center, so their first two years, '20 and '21, that's not in Lumperdale?
It wasn't at that.
Oh, that was also.
It's that new ER that's off that shifter.
Yeah, it's the new emergency room and all that. Yeah, that's.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
All right. Next is the Auburn Opaika Commission of Business Bureau, and this increase is directly related to our increase in lodging tax revenue. We are, we remit in one step for lodging tax to. Lee Russell Council of Governments, they're not requesting an increase in '23, but they are requesting $4,737 in '24, and that's to cover the increase in the cost of meals and other services to develop. And the impines, so that $230,000 is what the council approved in March related to work out there, to the airport station.
And that's also assuming everything gets done and our money comes to you, meaning there's still books on that, too.
Boys and Girls Club of Lee County, they're requesting $31,877, and they would like to use that to expand the program to more citizens of Auburn. They noted, noted child advocacy centers requesting.
Okay, with the Auburn Daycare Center incorporation, does that include Joiling?
That's just Auburn Daycare Centers Incorporated.
Yeah. They've got three, you know, Tony, they've got three facilities, so that money just goes to, we just, you know, it goes to daycare center. Where do they distribute it to? You know, some of them.
Okay. So it's a possibility that they may distribute that to Joiling, or it just go with the Auburn Daycare Centers.
It's just Auburn Daycare Centers. That's how I read it, but they've, they've got, what?
It's not.
They've got a facility inside the working community center, and they've got two in the House of Lords.
Yeah, that's just Auburn Daycare Centers.
That's just Auburn Daycare. They do a great job.
Oh, I know, I know. I do know that.
Child Advocacy Center is requesting $5,000 more per year.
I'm sorry, I was just helping. I wasn't clear on the Boys and Girls Club of Lee County.
Yes. What they noted was they wanted to expand its services to more youth in the Auburn community, and there's more detail in the packet.
Oh, great. Well, what I can tell you is that 18, 123 basically pays for their rent in the working community center.
And remember, they're paying half the rent that everybody else is because of the amount of facilities they use, and we have to ask them, care use. They are basically at five to 10 cents a square foot. We pay all the utilities, the tenants don't pay anything, so it is a tremendous deal that the tenants get there. And yeah, that's just funding their expenses.
It's just, it's going to track off, so they're just asking for their programs, the circle of children. Going from 18 to 50.
Why did they ask for 50 then, when you have spent 18? No, the 18 is just akin to rent, which the mayor is saying, you may not be able here in the year. They would prefer to not pay rent at all, and that's the city manager saying that, which he knows over 25 years, but what the, all that we're funding right now is an offset. They, they pay us rent in essence, and we give them money to offset, but they're paying us for rent.
So it's a wash?
It's a wash, yeah.
Okay. So they not, you will on 50 every year?
No, no, they're now asking for additional funding of 31, 877 for programming. They don't like receive 18, 123 the last.
They pay their rent.
And they just use their volunteer help and their own initiative to create programs.
I think they, when I was a fundraiser, they, you know, they asked, all these people ask, people aren't, and you have their own events, or say. Your child advocacy center, which is in your packet, is point sayers, just in, in the conversation.
And so they're asking for additional $5,000, and that is due to the number of services they provided to continue to use trials. The Domestic Violence Prevention Center is requesting 5,000, and they did not specify what the increase is for. Same with Red Cross, they're requesting additional 5,000, they did not specify. So now we're down to the two new requests. One is AO Discover, that's the museum, and they would like to use the funds to purchase vehicles and to expand its travel and incidents.
The children's museum, it's STEM-oriented, and so that, that's their request. You also have AU, COSAM, all the science and mathematics, does very similar services, and we do not fund them.
And there's also what the Boys and Girls Club states, they want their, like, West End.
I understand, yeah.
Go back to the food bank. You said the food bank should have funded through the, the money?
They have, so you have the capital campaign, that, that is done, so that's why there's no more funding in there. And you've got the, the community market of Lee County, that's being funded, level funding on that, and they have received a lot of money from us in the CARES Act, directly through our block grant program, and we've heavily funded that, and any, you know, food insecurity has been a huge issue, particularly in COVID, and it's been heavily funded with other grant funds that we have.
Yeah, but this other, it is other requests, it says they're still asking for 25,000, F1, 23, and F1, 25. That's the community market, right?
Yeah, it's in there.
Where is that?
Right there.
Okay. That's kind of their retail operation.
Well, and they've also got, we do, and Al Davis talked about that two days a week at that weekend, we've got another one, so we're catching all of these families, the Boys and Girls Club, to the daycares there, and whatever, where they're able to shop at that weekend in a smaller version.
See the higher.
And we have heavily funded through block grant food insecurity, because it's been one of our, our bigger challenges, and so a lot of that's heavily funded through there.
And then our second new request is I Am My Brother's Keeper, and that funding would use to support programs, staff, and its allocation, as well as transportation, providing matching funds for plus, for transport of children.
Do they still be issued break grants?
Yes.
They said, that's Monday to Thursday?
Yes, I think so.
After school till supper time.
And she also has a summer program.
Connie, didn't you tell me that they're receiving, they're receiving some?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking that, and I may not be correct, I thought Al was going to be here today, but do they receive money through the commitment to law?
Scott will look that up real quick.
A lot of the money through COVID has gone to the program.
The what, Scott? Yes, we got.
Through the COVID funds, I'm sorry. Through, through the COVID funds, and we did, most of the monies that I was trying to pull up was that we, we got from AYACO, which was, was the, that was even, that was any purchase for you?
Yeah, just hold that thought. I don't recall, but we won't check.
I was, I was actually talking about the I Am My Brother's Keeper.
No, that's what we're checking on. It's not ringing a bell that we did fund those COVID funds, but we might have.
No, no, no.
Right, and that's not CB, GR, normal allocation. We've got, we got a whole other tranche of money, one through the state and some from the federal government directly, but both following through our block grant folks, and a blind share of that, you know, we did normal assistance, we did utility assistance, and we did a lot of food bank work, but this is trying to check, it's the CB money, and it's called coronavirus money, and there's CARES Act, which was funded into that program.
They have.
They have, they receive. Erica's faster than me, just for start financial.
It'll take a little bit longer.
Sorry, I missed. But also, so have a number of the other players on here receive money either through us or through other ways in the CARES Act. This isn't just a.
So one wouldn't really have anything to do with the other, is what's funding goes.
I mean, that's, in your eyes, that depends on how the council feels about that. I mean, we can, we can look that up, and we can tell you correctly when we've allocated funds.
I think when Al had that meeting, he said that they had given I Am My Brother's Keepers some money, but it was a small amount. It was a really, really small amount, so, you know, I just don't want, you know, it to be that we're not going to give them, you know, what they requested simply because of that small amount.
Well, the other thing that, that, you know, that those are one-time hits or so on those funds, and those eventually go away. What a lot of that did was sustain some of these agencies, and we did not increase their funding through COVID, either, or the additional services they were providing. And so ultimately, it's up, you know, up to you guys, but we'll get you some more information on it.
Fiscal '21, they received.
Those $15,000.
16.
15,000.
15, okay. Through, from where? Which source?
So it all came through community services, yeah. So it's the community development.
It's, it's one of two things. It's the CB, which is coronavirus. It either came through the state's allocation from the federal government for coronavirus funding, or directly to us from the federal government, similar pots of money.
But it came through a source that doesn't exist?
Yeah, it's not the general. You know, this, what we're talking about funding from is the city's general.
Yeah, yeah.
That was coming through, and again, you're, you're right, that's one-time money. I, Scott's double-checking, I want to make sure, based on what Connie remembers, that it's not in our annual allocation, which is, is different. We changed that annually, but a lot of times we fund similar organizations, and it's not ringing a bell, as me is a long-time group that we funded.
We funded them this past time. I, I'd have to go, I can't find my total, but I don't have my total the last time on the program here. I don't believe they were in this year's program, or was proposed in '22.
I haven't received anything since May of '22, so we probably, it's not included in '22.
The, the list before us here are the general ongoing agencies that we continue in, if all is good in the world, we continue to, except the last two newcomers to.
Absolutely.
What possibly become a, a ongoing relationship.
Yes. And it doesn't, you know, you're not adopting everyone, and what I mean by that is it's ultimately up to the council, the time that we're doing budgeting, you know? I, I left level funding in, because that's what we had done in the previous by any, up to you, and it's always a discussion in my 25-year term, the city council always has robust discussion about this, and that's why I also told you, we don't go out and solicit. When people say, I would like for the city to fund, and they, they do, they get a packet when we, when we open it up, but we don't, you know, post on the internet, like I said, come one, come all. Because of the very specific parameters that you have, and it's hard, we have people asking us for money every day, agencies do, and that puts you guys in a tough position.
The numbers that we're looking at, are the numbers requested by the agencies? Specifically, that's totals that they've asked for?
Yeah, so if you were to fund everything, is that increase 115?
They're increasing to 215.
But, but is that including the airport? There's some things to me that don't count. We're, we're contractually obligated, so what's the number? Is it the 115 number, the ones that are not, they're just the nonprofits?
Take the airport, which is now.
Take two, or the one.
Take two, that's the one. That's $20,000 right there.
And we have our two new ones we're adding, which is putting new to it, so. Yeah, they're not adding, so, yeah, they're, so that's.
In the 215.
You didn't recommend we fund it?
Okay, so the city manager's only, doesn't take a position on, is the city manager, yeah?
No, the number, correct.
Correct. What's, what's in the budget right now is the level funding of the agencies we're already funding, or that we are obligated to fund through some other contractual agreement, correct? We, you know, we feel strongly here, the policymakers, and that's where we can tell you what the agencies are doing or what we know, but it's a, that is definitely a council function.
All right, so, you know, questions for Erica?
Just, just going to clarify, I Am My Brother's Keeper is not a confirmed, is not in the '22 program, but was funded last year, and got.
Right, but their '21 fiscal year started in June or July?
Yes.
June, yes. I mean, they're, they just, they just opened up fiscal year twenty-two, right? Yeah, so, theirs are offset from ours for good reason.
And part of what they asking for is transportation?
Yeah.
And I, I, I actually know about that program a lot, you know, pretty well. And I can know that they do in transportation. I mean, most, most of these organizations, when they open it up and they're trying to help in, in community, that type of stuff, they don't need transportation in order to get those kids. To and from. Because of, and simply because with this program, they're, they're really, they really represent the underserved community. And I got my own nonprofit doing the same thing, but transportation is the key, is the main source of life, being able to.
Thank you. How much of those are getting provided here? Private vehicle or is there?
Some eggs.
Some eggs.
I will say that during COVID, she was doing a feeding program when they could not feed in person. They, she had it set up where they could come and, I guess, get things to work on at home if they wanted to, but they also got, got heels. And they did that out of right ground as well.
I think another qualifying question in the future is how many individuals have been served by that agent, agency? Or outreach, what their reach is? Because it's very difficult, because I used to do this for a living, is ask people for money for a nonprofit. And for me to look at these and some of them, they're asking for almost ninety percent of what they, their revenues are. And that's a very hard, basically, to digest. And then the other thing is, if they're asking for, let's just say, twenty thousand dollars, what impact does that twenty thousand dollars have in our community? Is that for ten kids? Is that for five hundred kids? Is that, I mean, those are just things in the future that would be good to know, just so that we can, if we make these decisions and we spend taxpayer's dollars, we can defend what that looks like and why we're doing it.
Connie, when we talked the other day about what we're going to spend the COVID munchen, whatever it's called. And we went up the bottom line to.
Three hundred thousand is unallocated at this time, in terms of what's proposed in this budget.
And we kind of specifically said, we're going to leave the words and then we're calling this one of the votes of that. I think I probably got some of that from the council meeting.
Right.
But is that the source of money that will be available for plus-ups in this longer list?
Not necessarily. So I'll have Erica as also our expert on, you know, you'll say rescue fund, plan money. It's also State and Local Recovery Act is, is what it's officially called under ARPA. But I'll have Erica explain it. And in my feeble mind, it comes down to, it has to be directly related to some sort of coronavirus response. And also, we have big challenges depending on where you receive the funding from, from other coronavirus funds. We have to be very careful with agencies. And then last point before Erica gets into all of it. As I mentioned to you that day, when I made the initial presentation, the city is on the hook for this money. So if an agency misuses these funds, we're liable. So we have to monitor the agency. We will be held accountable by the federal government, so we also very careful. We don't want to have to monitor twenty agencies. I don't have the staff power to do that. So that's why we're looking for a few agencies. And the reason I left it unallocated is, getting past this discussion, we're supposed to look at unmet needs caused by coronavirus in part of the community. Our block grant program has identified a lot of those and taken care of them. And homelessness is just one where we've done some things, but it looks like there needs to be more based on what we've learned. And so that's kind of what we're looking for and why it was left that way. We need to have some public meetings about it just to see if maybe we missed them.
On a, on a basis, we've had several that asked for transportation increases for them. And I assume that some of that was as a result of COVID, that we had to have increased activities for people who had to get them or that kind of stuff. I don't know. I mean, you can probably justify some of that with, I mean, you had to look at it almost like a one each.
Yeah, so it's a lot of monitoring, you know, in that way, the agency that also has to do what we have to do. And so it's a, we've been, and you know this, but we're always conservative. We're extremely careful about the use of federal dollars and making sure that nobody on this council is asking us to do otherwise. But that's why I want to take a deep dive on that three hundred thousand later. But it has to be tied to specific functions.
And there's a, a date specific as well that has to be, have been incurred after March third, twenty-one. So if they incurred something during the biggest part of COVID in twenty.
So that's where we're also challenged, the hospitals, you know, in that tranche. And that's where they can document way past that date, all the expenses that have not been reimbursed in the other way for being COVID and who they're touching in our community. They can easily quantify that.
So I guess the big overarching answer there is, is no.
Unless we can get it, yeah, get into the lead.
Recovery funds to hog them, so these funding increase requests.
And once you do fund them, so just a preview, and the next council has to deal with this. We are doing a biennial budget for twenty-three and twenty-four, but for twenty-five, it will be a one-time only annual budget because I want to get off election cycles with the biennial so that we don't have all of these things and nine people being re-elected at the same time or elected the same time we're doing the budget. It will be a mid-biennium, so it'll be a little bit calmer. So we are going to have an unusual cycle that shows up in the next council term. But all that to say is that once people hit this list, they do expect to stay on it.
Right, so if you allocate through special funds, then it doesn't hit this list?
And you're no different than any council that I've encountered in my tenure here. This is an agonizing thing, you know, and it's a very, very tough decision for our policymakers about who you fund and who you don't. The good news is, you don't have an overwhelming number of agencies requesting funding that are new. And you also don't have, because of all of the federal funding that's been available, a lot of agencies asking for big bucks more. You know, that's helpful because usually we see a much bigger fluctuation in agency, existing agency requests for more money. And they have done a great job, our long-term partners, of holding the line, saying, we've received, we've got money other ways and we're going to hold the line with you. We're, we're still okay for now. At mid-biennium, it's rare, we could get a request periodically. We do to adjust because somebody's had something catastrophic happen or whatever, and we deal with that.
We do not send packets?
No, we don't send packets. They would have to approach us if it has to be major. But in the case when she talked about Lee County Emergency Management, they had, had neglected to ask us for a contribution of the county. And Opaika was making toward their console construction. We felt strongly that we ought to put our skin in the game as well. And that's, that's why it was in mid-biennium.
Well, I want to ask a question about, I'll go back to something Kelly brought up, about the homeless business. Now, with the monies that the block grant gives, and Al, when he was doing his presentation, well, he talked about that, but he was talking about, you know, people being homeless, like, you know, they may be for a night in a hotel room or they may have lost a job and just need, you know, those type of funds. But when they got up and talked about it, and they got, got up and talked about it on Tuesday night, that was a totally, to me, totally different situation than what A.L. funds provide.
Correct.
And I, and I do know just from the monies that, that, that block grant gives, it's not, it's real, very limited because it's not a whole lot of money. And so he only given out maybe a couple of hundred dollars here and there to the homeless. But she's talking about something bigger, where people actually living in their cars. And he did say, I did hear him say that, you know, it's not to that extent, that that's not really a problem for homeless. So, but apparently there is. I wasn't aware of it, that, you know, that it was.
Yeah, there is. We have transient homelessness, which is, we've got people passing through, get the police deal of that, something has happened along the way and they end up here and need help. They get help that way. But we do see minor, you've heard the numbers the other night, you know, how many people they have helped, which isn't an overwhelming number right now. And that's why of that three hundred thousand dollars unallocated, there was a notion that, that they could have gone into the outside agency side and requested. But because a lot of issues that they're dealing with are also caused by COVID. Where I was coming from, in my proposal to use agencies like that, we would be dealing with these monies because they have to be encumbered by twenty twenty-four and spent by twenty twenty-six. And we can see how that goes and carries this through some budget years to give the council some metrics of what do we need to do, should they be a regular agency? Because you're right, you're talking about emergency homeless. That's what Al's program is dealing with, block grant money. The rest of it would be otherwise. Now, police deal with transient homelessness, which Paul could talk about. And our goal is to get people to their family, to get them where they were going, to do whatever, you know. Chief Anderson used an example the day a woman got robbed on Highway eighty, not, not in this county or in the city. It was dropped off at the Walmart on South College. And what happened was she was, she was traveling to Mississippi and she's from Georgia. We were able to facilitate getting her back home to Georgia. And so those are things, too, that's a transient homelessness. So if police had called and said, well, this person needs a hotel room for the night. She's got no, no money, no means, you know, there's ways that we do that. But there are also other people that may be between jobs and other things that this shelter takes care of. And that's something from my lens, we have to look at. It's a service that we're going to have to help some people at some point in time and look at the existing shelters. But if we can do it with the, the ARPA money to see what this looks like, then that is something where, you know, we have a better lens to see how this goes coming up and better data to provide the next decision makers about it as to whether or not we should fund it out of general fund.
So they're not on this list?
No.
They have a request?
No, they would have if we did send a packet to them. So, but they are so eligible for this other pot of money and a lot of these folks aren't, that, that is part of the why. They have been in contact with the mayor for some time.
It's the one voice coalition that has shelter in the world. So we got, it's four forty-five, and I want to remind everybody's time. What I suggest is, is all of you think about this, think about what you're really passionate about, think about how you believe what your stance is on this. Would maybe just get in touch with everybody over the next three or four days and hear what you've got to say. And if we can, if there's five of us that have a consensus on something, then I'll make that, make that known to Megan and we can make that known to y'all. Talk about where we are administratively as far as what we have to do.
If you guys are wanting to change to this, and, and again, you're not deliberating here doing it. You have the right individually to talk to the mayor and can inform me where you stand. We have to adjust the budget ordinance. And that is a very hard thing to do on the fly during the council meeting because we make one adjustment here, it changes all these bottom line numbers that have to be in the ordinance. That's why we need to know. And you're perfectly fine with all state regulations, we're talking to one person about it or you're talking to me. I just need to know, if you guys don't want to level fund and you want to do something else, it's good to know what that is. Because unlike when we've done some other things, we cannot just adjust this ordinance on the fly. The ordinance you just saw in your last packets will be the ordinance on the agenda. We have to carry it over, but we can amend it. But we've got to know before the meeting, we can't, you know.
We can't amend it on the fly tonight?
No, and it fourteen different amendments and fourteen directions of unknown because the bottom line changes every time we adjust. We just have to have a signal and engage from you as to what's going on.
So I can offer just a data point, and I'm not advocating this for where to, I did estimate if we wanted to stay with the bottom line the same, what would it take if we get across the board to fund two additional agencies? The number expanded at eighty percent reduction of everybody in order to fund two new agencies. That's, again, I'm not saying let's do that, I'm just saying that's a data point that we were talking about.
So on the other side of that, if we were to decide to fund all requests, not having to put that either, where would the funds come from, from your ones, the hundred fifteen?
It's such a, you know, in the grand scheme of the hundred and forty million dollar budget and trying to keep all of our ratios of ending balance and all those other things, it's not going to impact us. This is a small enough amount that it just comes out of general fund. And it's just sitting in ending balance.
I, I do want to just ask everyone to seriously look at the, the ratio of a request versus an agency's revenues and their budget. I think that's a very important number to look at when someone's making their request. And in my opinion, over a certain percentage, that's, that's a tall word to, to consider from my, from my perspective. And I'm not, when I'm going versus another, I'm just. Yeah, we absolutely have that data. It's on their summary where it says, if anyone requests their budgeted revenues and their expenditures, it's very clear.
So is everybody good with that? Then I just, I'll be starting to touch base with you guys. And I know that this will be over the weekend, but Megan would like to have some kind of guidance.
When I said Monday, I was, I was to a Monday a week. You have more time, so.
Oh, that's your, your.
By, I need it by close of business Thursday of next week. That gives us Friday. To Friday and Tuesday leading up to the meeting should we need to be prepared for amendment. And the only reason we don't normally do this is just because of speeding up the process due to all things that are happening this summer is, is why we're, we're here. It's good to have this discussion. It gives us a better perspective of, we appreciate all of your input into what you'd like to see moving forward. This helps us get better information to you. That's our goal, so to make a decision.
Thank you.
Question, like we said, if you were to apply the eight percent, we wouldn't apply that money to the airport runway extension. And then also, I'd say the one that council prayed for any of those.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, those by resolution are contractual otherwise, and so they, they fall in here. But yeah, we're pretty. Great questions.
As you said, you, you know, had experience with this, with people asking for money. What, what do you think would be a reasonable percentage? Because you just mentioned about comparing it to their revenues. What, what would be something that would, in your mind, be outrageous and something that would be reasonable?
Well, eighty to ninety percent is outrageous, and I think under twenty percent is reasonable, depending on your size. And two, the numbers we don't have is we don't know their reach of, of their services. And so that's, it's kind of hard to estimate, so that was all having all the data in front of me. But if their reach is minimal, then, and their ask is large, then I think that's a, a red flag. Maybe they're not financially sound and sustainable for years to come. And I think we have to look at sustainability of these programs in the future as well.
Council hasn't been looking, in my experience, to adopt nonprofits at one hundred and ten percent of all of their funding. And that, that has always been a challenge of the council, and I think that's part of what you're getting at. It feels like the Lee County Main Society who also raised money underway, and our contractual relationship is different, so. Any more questions about outside agencies?
Are we good with that?
Because I know the two that are added new and going back and looking, how far, I guess, past did we have new people added to?
It's been a long time. But we have grown much, you know, we've probably grown by forty thousand people since. We would have to go back and look that up, but for those of us, Becky, Becky Winkler, who's sitting in, he's the longest. But it's been, and that's just because she was four when she came to work for the city. Well, you've got your forty-five year dinner, right? I knew that to me, since the vice admiral, Becky's been working for the city. But it's been a long time since we've added some agencies that I recall.
About ten or fifteen years ago, we added a couple. These are almost in the order. We tried to be funded, and some of those were the bottom.
And that ten thousand from the Red Cross was because I asked for it when I used to raise money for the Red Cross. So if I can tell you, that was in two thousand and five?
These things added when they, when they came to the city and wanted funding.
That's because it wasn't.
And they were told that their funding had to be tied to providing a service.
No, they, they revised that and they did send it back up. The email that you get, the, yeah. Tuesday we added and then got sent again, but it was not.
And Erica didn't talk about the prayer reserve?
Yeah, we're gonna post this.
But they, um, they approached the city about funding, and they, um, provide services, and of course, is another area that serves as a passive park in North Auburn. And they also have expanded their programs tremendously in the last few years.
Good breakdown, good breakdown. Okay, we've got just a little bit of time, and the staff might even say a little bit extra with us, but does anybody have any specific questions on the C I D that they wanted to ask while we were here today?
That's.
I think it has a hard for one.
C I D question?
Yes, I think it's related to the C I P. I see elements of.
We've got a dog over here.
What was, what was, what, like the Blue Way-Green Way project and a couple of other trail track projects, see, they really dealt with me with the general connect organ plan that made, made a presentation in 2019. I was wondering, is, is that in its entirety ever going to come in for us?
So the goal was to deal with that and with the 2040 committee, and that got paused. And so that's why we're.
So it still has a presence somewhere in our.
It is, it's sitting there, we're ready, but we thought we would see what the group, you know, matter of that group, see where they want to go with some things, and then go somewhere. As we restart that, you know, council wants to do otherwise, of course, we can do otherwise. But you do, you're right, you see, you see that we're connecting Moore's Mill to Town Creek Park with this budget, that the Blue Way-Green Way, a lot of questions were asked about that, that's, that's back in. I would say that you could see some changes. We may still switch surfaces. The more expensive surface is in, the hard surface is in, as opposed to a crush and run. And so we put the more expensive in here, it may ratchet down, but I would hope it would ratchet up. We really tried to get right with inflation and everything else in this budget, but, yeah, you see some signals of that. And also, where the Blue Way-Green Way is going is an area in town we have very little of anything. And so it was important to me to pick that project back up. It got cut due to COVID and due to some indecision about the services, and it's back because it's tracking with what we told people we'd be doing in that area.
And I just wanted to add, you know, you haven't seen me, this is the first time I've been here, I've been away. I want you to know, in speaking to your talk about, about your time, I really appreciate y'all's time. I had binge-watched the first, season one and season two.
And you're awake.
Yeah, so thank you all very much. I, I want everybody to know, I didn't do the research, I'm just not spawning any.
And you came back and you had a new polling location, that you were, your ward was gonna vote in your wards.
All good. Thank you all very much, I appreciate your work.
Okay, Jennifer, first meeting, did it all right?
I know, I think so. I hope, that's a good discussion, yeah.
Well, you were squirming, you sat next to the public with safety for everything.
I know, I did.
Now, we do have fancy new ward maps with your pictures, including Jennifer's picture that the mayor noticed my version was hanging in my office, which I left this morning. So if you want a full-size print version, let me know, and I'll get one printed for you. Kelly already wants one.
Oh, yeah, you know I do.
I know I have one in my office for you already, because that goes without saying. Maybe anybody else wants a full poster size of yourself with your ward and your polling location, let me know.
Can we throw darts at it?
I'm very wolfing, right?
Yeah, you can play council darts, we can make a new one with wards and a five-shave menu, yeah. But all that's out there and ready to go, so if you need anything, let me know in that regard. And again, any of you need a meeting, and Jennifer's getting caught up on some things, if you need a meeting and have some specific questions, I'm happy to sit down with you and bring the staff members in that can help answer those leading up to it. We are, we are out on, on July 4th itself, but the rest of us are in all the way up until the council meeting day, if we can do that. And I want to make sure you have all the information you need. Council members, while I was asked some questions along the way, I have not shared all those with you there.
Nobody should be surprised by that, me too.
We have two versions of that, but if, meaning, and I've been tracking on the same sheet so we can follow up with you.
I've sent her several typewriters pages.
Typewriters?
Well, I sent them to a family, somebody else typed them, I'm not gonna type. But I appreciate y'all, your response and your interest in those, other folks along there, welcome.
Yeah, I'm happy to share those, if anybody would like to see them, they're, you know, they're specific, but I didn't email all of you, because I don't know if you have the same questions. And so we're happy, you know, any of that, I'm happy to share a few.
Well, I, I do have one question I would like to know about the open places. I, I was just wondering how did Ward 1 and Ward 8 handle, I know how Ward 1 and Ward 8, now what was Ward 8 voting for?
The Clarion, so the Richland Road area is now wholly in Ward 8, except for Yargo Farms and, and the golf club area, and there's a lot of density in there. What happened was, the Clarion end used to be in Ward 7, it's now in Ward 6. And so while we were tracking legally either way, it's a little awkward to have polling locations, like two wards would be voting in a polling location, 7 and 8, that nobody, it's not in either ward. So we went through all this legal checking and back and forth, and it's just the same, we have the opportunity to move anybody we want to the Coliseum. The challenge with that is, is Coliseum sits handling Ward 1, and I didn't want to shift everybody who's used to voting at Boykin, that's long-lived in Ward 1, to a new polling location. So the decision was, I also talked with the current Ward 8 representative, and said, we can go either way here legally, this is what we're looking, and, you know, the preference was there. So yeah, it does throw it off kilter, but what it's also doing is, 2 and 3 are now voting at Frank Brown, and Frank Brown sits squarely now in Ward 2. So we were not trying to scare everybody, we have a whole postcard campaign. Now that we're past this, this last election that we had this Tuesday, we'll send it out twice, and we're getting voter lists and we're doing address lists, so some of them are gonna bounce back, and we're trying to remind people for the city election here, because it's different than your polling.
And I don't have a problem with that, I just wonder how that happened, you jumped from.
You kicked me out. Well, you kicked me out, we got Tommy in the street.
So where do Ward go? Ward goes to the.
So, yeah, so you have, you have 1 and 8, 2 and 3 are together at Frank Brown, 4 and 5 are now at Dean Road, and 6 and 7 are at the Clarion. And so it shifted based on our population shifts, and, and I expect bigger changes that we may split out the single voting location by the time four years from now, because as the Public Safety Training Center gets finished, and others, that's, we're actually scrambling and hope to have that project completed by the next presidential election so that people that live in that 280 vicinity and, and can vote at a bigger polling location, at a much safer entry and exit of, I hope, 280.
Right.
Hamilton parking. We're also trying to shift to places that, and we have to deal with the fact, and we talked to the judge about this, Auburn Community Church is a massive facility being built on Hamilton Road, and they have offered in the past, and the mayor has worked on this, to beat a big polling location. And it would be nice to have people driving not as far away from their homes or on their commute pattern or work and so on. So we're trying to expand our footprint and give people more places to vote. And the Coliseum is in play, the university is generous and saying you can use it, but then we have to decide who all is gonna be voting there and in what geography. And that's very nice, but then some people are gonna say, well, I'm used to voting at the Clarion, and now I don't want to have to drive onto campus and park there, you know, it's the enjoy of joys, so.
Okay, thank you everybody for your time. Thank you for sassing your time.